Seven o'clock, we call for meeting order. Stand for the pledge, please.
The United States of America and to the Republic with its hands. One nation under God, indivisible, in thy name I testify.
Okay, I get the motion to accept the minutes of April 6.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Have the, have the motion to accept the financial report and budget payment of bills.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Steve, we have a budget amendment.
Yes, I want a budget amendment this evening. Budget amendment number 2011 dash 017 is to re-occupate and facilitate savings from Public Works Department at Storm Pond Maintenance Account through the building and Apple Athletic Account. For the purpose of purchasing enhancement to the security system of the Public Works Garage.
Okay. We have a motion to accept budget number 211 dash 017.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. All right, we do the other one. Yep. I have a proclamation. Tourism Month. Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton's proclamation, whereas the travel and the tourism industry in Elton, Cecil County, and the state of Maryland is vital to our economy, stability, and growth, and contributes to our social well-being, and whereas every citizen benefits from our tourism assets and the revenues generated by the tourism dollars. Whereas in 2010 tourism generated 149 million and more than 2,000 jobs in Cecil County and 17 million in state and local taxes. Whereas tourism revenue is generated without the expense of providing services, results, and reduction of the budget burden placed upon taxpayers. Whereas I call upon all citizens of Elton to take pride in our town and county tourism attractions and celebrate the significant positive impact that tourism dollars have on all of us. And therefore, I Joseph Alfonso, and by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Town of Elton, and on behalf of the board of commissioners and the citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim the month of May, of May, 2011, as Tourism Month in the Town of Elton and commend this observation to all citizens. Witness thereof, we have on two set our hands and seal of the Town of Elton this 20th day of April, 2011. Joseph Alfonso, Charles Hicks, Earl Piner, Mary Jo Zabonski, and Charles Gibbons. I have a motion to accept the proclamation.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we have a certificate of recognition. Mr. William Hammond will come up front.
Come on up, Harvey, I know you're surprised.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion that we take a picture with a flag instead of just at a wall or somebody.
Then, I mean, we can go to take a picture.
Okay.
Is there a proclamation?
No, just, instead of taking a picture of a person on a wall, I'm just... I'm gonna dance.
Okay. Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton, certificate of recognition to Mr. William Harvey Hammond. Whereas William Hammond has called Elton home for more than 40 years, whereas at his daughter's urging, he began a walking program more than 10 years ago. Whereas his walking routine involved to include a stop at the field room at about 2:13, where he shares his enthusiasm for life by sharing a smile and friendly wave to passing motors. Whereas drivers and passersby have made him an important part of their day, looking forward to seeing him at his post. And whereas William Hammond demonstrates that a person is not measured by material possessions, but by the intended loyalty gifts they give to their fellow men and women. And therefore, on behalf of the Mayor Commissioners and the citizens of Elton, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation to our favorite son, Mr. William Harvey Hammond. And when this air out, we have on two set our hands and seal of the Town of Elton this 20th day of April, 2011. Joseph Alfonso, Mayor, Commissioner Hicks, Piner, Zabonski, and Gibbons. Congratulations to keep up the good work.
Oh, I had the whole group there.
Harvey, before we move on, I just want to thank you, thank you for what you do, and it's, and it's great to see you out there standing on the bridge. I know sometime, well, first I gotta start, you started walking and then it went to the bicycle. But certainly, I know on my job and around town, people always talk about the fact, who was that man on the bridge? And I mentioned him that, you know, you've lived here most of your life, went to Carver High School. Also, a lot of people don't know you, an outstanding pitcher in baseball. And certainly, it's glad to, for this to happen.
Yeah, I would say the same, same thing there, Harvey, because the shape this world's in today, and the people we got here, and everybody's, you know, kind of down. It's always nice to come up there and see a friendly face and wave and maybe cheer that person up. They may have had a bad day or a rough timing, and it would just gives them that little lift. And that's what we all need, is that little lift. So I certainly do thank you.
I tell everybody when I see you in the morning at 4:30, 5 o'clock, that he's guarding the town while you're sleeping. And they laugh. And they all ask me, is the man crazy? I said, no, the crazy ones are the ones still sleeping. So we, we just wanted to thank you for having that smile on your face early in the morning.
I would like to also thank you so much. You make my day when I have to go that way early in the morning, and you're waving and smiling. That smile is, is just a million dollar smile, and I thank you for doing that every day.
I'd like to add as well, just, just moving here five years ago, in the, in the position that I took on with the town, I could tell you it was many, many days where it was kind of rough. And just, just in a down mood and a, like a can't win situation. But I tell you, when I did see you on the bridge and you waved, and it just, it lifts your spirits, and, and I just want to thank you for bringing that to Elton. And even the passer-throughs, and, and everyone notices that you're, you're a big asset. Thank you.
If you don't want to stay during the meeting, you can take off whenever you want to step out the door. Thank you.
We received our I-Wiff Safety Award. And what it is here, basically, is I-Wiff proudly presents this safety award to the Town of Elton in honor of its outstanding commitment to workplace safety as an I-Wiff policy owner for 11 years, and for maintaining a loss ratio of 13.76 or less for three consecutive terms, March 10, 2011. And this is it. I think we all should be proud of it. I-Wiff Award. Very good. Good for all the employees and everybody, and being safe. Okay, Lewis?
We got kind of a boring thing after the Hammond's presentation. Ordinance 2 dash 2011 is the amendment to the town code for major facility charges. For many new codes who reflect that 25% of major facility charges were collected at the time of a new home permit being issued for the home. And a 75% would be collected at the occupancy. This is, this would allow a lighter front-end load on developers for housing construction in Elton. It was introduced at the last meeting, and I asked the board to consider it for adoption tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to accept ordinance 2 dash 2011, adjustments to major facility fees.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. One thing I have is the reminder by tomorrow, there was a hard hat tour of the senior housing project between 4 and 5. I don't know if he's all gone, but it's that time, and also the MML dinner tomorrow night at Chesapeake City. And one other thing, I did go this afternoon, it was a very rewarding experience, to the Seasons Hospits Appreciation Month for the volunteers. And I gotta say, it was very, very nice to see all the volunteers we have that do, do the job that they do do. And I do commend all the volunteers that go out here and help the people. Okay, Mary Jo?
I wanted to thank Public Works and especially Sydney, where the, the write-up was in the paper today, for working with the children of gift and manner. How they influenced the Chesapeake Bay through our water shore management program. I think that was a great thing to do and have the kids see firsthand. And I didn't know if we're gonna address an email we received, or we'll just let it go. Okay, that's it.
I just want to thank all the town employees for basket, fruit basket, since I was in the hospital this week, past week. I did touch base with one of the guys that rides a bicycle every day, every morning, and every night in the Town of Elton. And I thought it would be a good thing for him to come, even though I knew with this, well, MAPCO plan that they put in place for the bicycle routes. It'd be good to get his implement, and, input, yeah, I get that word right, input in this matter, because he rides the bicycles through town every day. He can take different routes and what could be changed. I thought it would be a good thing for the Town of Elton. And his name is Dick Feltman. Everybody knows him, seeing very well, know personally in the Town of Elton. So he's willing to help us out any, any way we can.
He is, then I need to get with him, or we need to get him on, or we have to establish a, through the thing that we've done, we've got to establish a bicycle committee. So we've got two people thus far, if he'd like to join, would you please ask him to, Kentucky or G Menter?
Yes.
And we can put him on the committee, because we need to get five people.
What is the bicycle committee going to serve to do, or what is going to be its purpose?
Implement the bicycle plan that we just passed, you know, to get everybody together and get this, make sure that the signings there, the walks are done, and all that stuff that has to be done. Is that it? Charlie?
Just a reminder, I guess, to ourselves, to see, I know we have been accustomed to twice a week trash pickup and no recycle. Now we're gonna go soon, in more than a week, to the once a week and the trash pickup and the one day for recycle. I hope we stay alert of that, because I don't know what kind of problems it will present. I know you're obviously trying to do something new, but I'm just reminded before of the backlash that we received and when Mayor Croft was in office, and we went from two trish days to one. And people basically are creatures of habit, so hopefully they can adjust to that, but certainly we need to stay alert of it.
Well, you know, I think if you, I've been looking at it too, and watching everything I throw away. If you think of it nowadays, just about 99% that you throw away is recyclable, just about. So they should be, or anything they throw, it should be, they should jump on board with it, because it's, other than food waste, I think, basically, it's about the only thing you need to have a trash can for anymore.
And I agree with you, but we're in a time and age now that people may not do that, they may not follow that, and, you know, a lot of people in this world now believe in the word entitlement, that they're allowed to do whatever they want. If that's gonna be the case, then that entitlement's gonna fall back on the town in some capacity. Obviously, if I'm a trish man and I'm gonna pick up recyclables, I wanna pick up recyclables and not trish. Because if there's something that says recyclable, and there's trish in it, that's gonna be left behind. Obviously, then that neighbor or resident's gonna leave, it's gonna know why my trash wasn't picked up. Now you've gotta go back to them and say, it's not trish we're looking for, it's the recyclable.
All right, but you gotta remember one thing, and mention to everybody that with the recyclables, you don't use a bag. There's no bags. You put the recyclables in the trash can without the bag. That way, when they do pick it up, they can see that it's all recyclables.
And this is the point I'm making, because that's the reason why you sent out the label that said recyclable. Obviously, the labels won't go on a bag, or you can go on a bag, but they're gonna go in the trash. However, it's supposed to be a container with recyclables in it, and that's what's supposed to be in it.
That's correct.
I'm just saying, I'm just giving preventive medicine, that's all I'm saying right now. And lastly, Lois, our financial person, is there anything that you can provide the people who come to the town meeting with some type of financial summary?
Can we?
Yeah. From a person from the public coming into a meeting, I have an agenda of the meeting also, I guess if a taxpayer also wanna know the state affairs of the financial bit of the Town of Elton.
Well, the town furnishes a checkbook, sir, the checks that are being signed tonight.
They're out front.
There's a copy of the checkbook, sir, of the check that you're applying.
Is there a financial balance of the town?
We're currently not anything prepared for public, if you all each have a...
That's what I'm saying, just look at that and see what you can come up with, if anything, and just report back, that's all.
Okay, sure.
You know, we're all elected people, give you these things there, that's all I'm doing is asking. I'm just the messenger at this point, and certainly all of us are. I think that's it.
You sure it's? I'm good, thank you. Okay, Becky?
I have to sit down. Okay, thank you. My name is Becky McKinnon, and I've been for many, many years. Oh, that's a problem which is very serious. Misforgiveness is talking about the trash. Okay? We have garbage cans, we have names on them, or recycle on them. That's number one. Number two, what are you gonna do about these garbage cans on Main Street in the trash? It's in that. There. Moons are ahead of that. It's been sitting there, it's been there for the last 15 years, and it's still there. What are you gonna do with that? Nothing. You haven't done nothing yet, so you ain't gonna do nothing, period. Don't look at me like you're going to, because you haven't done nothing yet. And this is not my first time asking, so that tells me you're not gonna do anything.
Becky attacked all followers, don't attack one person, please.
I said, no, you all, or not the mayor and Louis. I'm attacking them because they're the big shots, you're the little shots. You work for them, Mr. Gibbons. You work for them, just like I would work for them.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, thank you. I mean, we have trash cans sitting all over Main Street. The vacant building still has trash out there every morning. Mr. There, White Beach Out in Town, he has trash in his building sitting outdoors. I mean, we want Elton to look like Elton happily, have it look like Elton without the trash. Do you wanna call this a facility dump of Elton? Like it used to be years ago? Or would you like to call it Elton, the Town of Elton? And personally, I, I don't see why we gotta have, when the trash people are at Holland Grove Manor, yes, I do go in there every day. I have my reason why. Because the town director is not doing his job like Mr. Hicks did. How do you like you now? Well, anyway, needless to say, they're picking up beds, couches, tables, chairs, glass doors, window frames, and everything on the trash truck. Excuse me, that's not trash. Right? That is not trash. Trash is trash, but that's not trash. We have a guy building a shed on Road 4 and Road, or Road 3, and it's, he's been building it. Not, he's, he don't have a permit. I already checked it out. I'm not dumb. I might live in town, but I still get, still get my way of watching people. We still need to have some checks done on Row 11 for children at the age of 10, 8, and 9 running around at night at 11 o'clock. It's illegal, Lee. Hopefully, God will hopefully catch your parents, I'm working with the state with them, since I have nobody to help me. So personally, I'm upset more when you have a town place like I live. We have one dumpster. You're gonna tell me I need to put, buy me a kitchen garbage can, put my plastic bags in for my water? And take it down and dump in my garbage can, that's out back where I live? And then put my other ones in another can and take it down and dump it in the same garbage can? Is that what you want me to do, Joe? Because that's all we have, is one? That's all the school in Holland Grove Manor has, and that's all any school has. You see, I'm getting to where Mr. Gibbons is getting. You want everybody to have a recycled garbage can. If that is so, then the Town of Elton is gonna have to pitch in for these senior homes, these schools and everything, and buy them extra garbage cans. And this one goes here, and this one goes here, and this one goes here. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Excuse me, Becky, you're, if I might, your, your property manager and your building should be talking to you on how they're gonna recycle and use their dumpster, because it's, everyone does that on their own. Because they have the dumpsters, the trash service for their dumpster, they'll tell you what needs to be done.
I put it all in one go it out.
Well, you do now, but I mean, your property manager there...
I'm not making 50,000 bricks.
I, I, well, they'll, they'll explain to you, I don't know how they're gonna handle it, but it's up to them for your building.
Well, then it's up to somebody to, to write them a letter and tell them that we need a, a extra garbage can. You got 50 people living there, 60. We got five in the hospital one night. So you got 48, 47 people living there.
One other thing too, Becky, we do have, you don't have to buy another trash can. We do have stickers that you can put on your trash can and just peel it off, sticker it in the trash can and it says recyclable. So you don't have to buy another trash can.
I'm not gonna buy another.
You don't have to, because we got the little sign you put on it.
I'm gonna put it all in bags like I do now, so then the, that's what I'm gonna do, thank you in advance, yeah. See if you can't clean up the town some.
Mr. Littenberg?
Please, Bob Littenberg, 1051, Lane. Didn't recognize Mr. Hammond without his hat and his coat and his vest. Anyhow, I got some thing with an old business that doesn't seem like it's brought up too often. The town engineer, has that been discussed since it was discussed three meetings ago? About hiring a town engineer, Mary Jo brought it up, Mr. Piner brought it up?
Yeah, we discussed it. And we've got to work to see if we can get it fixed into the budget and see if we can afford it.
It would be nice to, nice to have some reports on some of the old business, because we never hear anything about that. The financial report. I think it ought to be verbal. Mr. Gibbons brought that up. I think their average person would like to know how much the town actually has. Do any of you know how much money the town has? Right now? With the financial reports you're getting, do you know how much money your town has?
You don't get that often reported.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
They do.
How much did the town have in, in excess money?
Excess money?
Excess money.
We don't, we don't do a balance sheet every week, we do one at the end of the year.
Just at the end of the year? You don't know what you got on a monthly basis?
We haven't, on all of the bases, we have an annual audit, and we know what the fund balances at the end of that. During the year, we can roll out the actual, but we don't put together a huge balance.
I guess I've been in a lot of organizations and so forth, but when they gave a personal report, they would give you how much money you actually had on hand. So you knew how much money you could project to do projects with. Your budget comes up, you're gonna be voting on a, on a $10 million budget. And if you don't know how much you've got in your accounts, how can you vote on a budget?
Cash on hand is very different than what the balance is in the, in the equity section.
Well, the, how much, my question is, how much equity, how much does the town actually have when you vote on your budget? Do you know how much money you had? That's my question.
As of, the budget for last year at June 30, 2010, we had 5.1 in excess, a million dollars.
Okay, so, but that's not what you have now?
No.
That's my question, if you're doing a financial report, I think people would like to know how much, maybe on a, on a bimonthly, or not bimonthly, but monthly basis, to how much money the town actually has. That's my question. What's the town done about the list that Dwight Hare gave them at that meeting when you had the land rent appear? He gave, they gave Louis the list of people that had buildings that were in disrepair, has anything been done about that? That should be coming up under old business.
We're working on them, and we'll see some, you'll see some action.
Has there been letters sent out to these people?
I believe there definitely has been one of them.
Referred to our CODOs.
Yeah.
Okay, but has letters been sent out to them?
I don't know. He's sent letters out to hundreds of people.
Hundreds? Okay, another word you really don't know.
Actually, one property has been addressed as of today. I know, because I was working with them earlier, and then I cleared with the town. The 124 and 124 and a half building did come in to get a, goes through their permit work for demolition of the building.
Which one's that now?
Next to the, uh, Main Street.
On Main Street, the old, the old floors.
The old floor shop.
And the other ones have, letters sent out to the other ones also, the ones that have been burned?
I couldn't give you an update on them. I don't know an update on them.
Uh, in your, in your expenditures for the month, you got Red the tailor. What, what does he, who does he tailor for? Is he an actual tailor, or is that just a name of a company?
That's the vendor further, please, here for us.
Please, you. I wonder if Eddie the tailor's been contacted to do anything for them, since he's right here in town?
No, that's just the name of the vendor.
Well, where's he, is he located in Elton?
I think he's in New Jersey.
Oh, New Jersey, that's interesting.
A textile uniform company, a wood manufacturer, the quantity of clothes that we've been borrowing. Doesn't, it's not his market.
He's not actually tailoring their clothes or buying the uniforms?
Yes, the name of the company. It's the X Y Z company.
That answers my question. I assume he was going to tailor. The community center, you, you're earmarking a million 500,000 for that. Have you discussed anything to maybe partner something with the Boys and Girls Club? I mean, girl, you're involved in this very much. Mary Jo's, she's the interim director. Have you worked, talked together about that, maybe doing something with them and, and sharing the cause?
I think the Boys and Girls Club is a whole different department or entity, or, they deal with their own organization. And I don't think they can use taxpayers' dollars to support whatever we do for the town.
I guess basically...
And that's a hypothetical.
They have two different missions, yeah.
But there isn't talk about the recreation. There's been some people coming to the town, and there will be a meeting in the next couple of weeks on that, and we'll be able to give you update on that.
Your porking farm, this was been discussed a long time ago, and you had, I recall, $125,000 out in arrears, in farming farms. Have you done anything to bring that money into the, lend it back into the town?
We sent some letters out and received some money back. And that's what we're gonna be ready to do. We're going, we have an organization that can give us all the addresses and tickets that we submit to them, and then... that can give us all the addresses and tickets that we submit to them, and then we can send letters out to them.
But you are getting money back?
We've got some money back.
One thing you need to know, to be informed, there is no rest of possibility on parking tickets for other states. So outside Delaware, if we send a letter that they owes five hundred dollars, they can just ignore it, there's nothing...
Well, and most...
...registration or take any action against it.
Most large cities, they have the law that if these people are in violation of that, and it goes up to a certain funding, they just tow the car away, and they have to pay for it once in town. That's what they do in cities. Just a question.
They come back, they do that in cities.
Well, they should be going out there, because last time I heard you mention that a lot of these cars are from Delaware, and repeated finders, so undoubtedly, they must be working here in town, and they wouldn't be repeated.
Jeannie or... Oh, okay. You can sit down, if you like.
Thank you. I've been doing, um...
Would you say your name, if I were us, please?
G E Anton, Elton, Maryland.
G E Anton.
A N T O N.
This is county resident.
Is that, that's G with a G or with a J?
G. It's a middle name, first name's Laura. I've been trying to do a petition for a catwalk, crosswalk, pedestrian walk across the highway where people were getting killed, being killed from Point Eight to near landing lane, and many signatures.
We do know we did have, we did have a serious problem there at one time, but I think it's kind of helped a little bit, because we did have the, all those lighting put up along Route Forty, and we also had signals and crosswalks put up with the push button, and that's where they're to cross. And I can tell you the same situation that I had down by Wal-Mart's. I had, we had the signalization and crosswalks put there, and just yesterday, I seen someone walking about halfway up, crossing the highway, but human nature, they want to do what they want to do. I mean, we put the crosswalks up there, we put the signals there to try and keep them safe. If they don't use it, I think, cross elsewhere.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm asking and talking about a crosswalk up and a cross to the highway.
That's also, that's a state highway.
And it's a lot of money, but I've talked to many folks who've lost their loved ones in this highway, and many signatures, and I'm not doing this for myself, I'm doing this for the people, and it's like, there's many signatures, and it's like...
Well, like I said, Bobby would have.
I don't bring it up, and if you go out there and look at five or six o'clock, and there are three times the traffic, and you want to go across that highway, it's not an easy situation.
Well, if they use the crosswalk and the hand, the signal there, and push that button, they can get across, because it does work. But it's also a state highway, and the state has jurisdiction over it, and you would have to, and you would have to contact a state highway to see if they would do it, because we couldn't do it, because it's their property, and they would have to be the ones that do the construction. And if they have the money, and they feel a need for it, or a survey, they, you know, it's up to them. So if you contact the state highway, we can give the person's name that you can contact and send a letter and your petitions to them, if you like.
I appreciate you. How do I go about this petition? So I just have signings?
Well, you can attach a letter, and you can attach, write a letter, and attach the petition to them, and explain to them what you're trying to do, and what you'd like them to do, if all possible. And Louis, could you give her the name of, give her a name? Okay, we'll do that for you, and you can send it to them.
It's for these folks.
Okay, that's good.
I can't recall, but is there, Louis, I can't recall, is there a button up for like there is to 79, Elton, I? It stops the traffic? I couldn't remember.
Okay, that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Have a second? All those in favor? Or adjourn?